This conference will now be recorded.
So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the Klatsepp County Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, April 13th, 2021. Would staff please take the role?
Christopher Farrar.
Present.
John Orr. Lam Kwong is not here. Nadia Gardner.
Present.
Robert Strickland.
Here.
Clancy Adams here, and Gail Henrickson.
Present.
Thank you.
It looks like we have a few members of the public. Welcome. Thanks for tuning in. We'll go ahead and adopt the agenda. So I'll take a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented.
I move we adopt the agenda for the April 13, 2021 meeting as presented.
And maybe Commissioner Orr's. Oh. Yes, okay, sorry. So I hear a motion from Commissioner Farrar and a second from Commissioner Orr. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. Next, we'll do business from the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a brief presentation about any land use planning issue or concern not on the agenda. All speakers from the floor are asked to state their name and address before speaking. If you're appearing in a representative capacity, please identify who you represent. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? All right, hearing none, I think we'll move on to our minutes. As you'll remember, we actually have two sets of minutes this meeting. At our last meeting, the present commissioners voted to continue the February meeting minutes to this April meeting because the number of commissioners present didn't quite add up to what was needed to get them passed. So I hope that everyone has had an opportunity to take a look at those minutes. We'll start with the February 9th, 2021 regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have any corrections who was present at that meeting?
I have a correction to the copy that I'm looking at, but maybe it's been updated. I don't know. I looked at the minutes as they were given in the packet for last month's meeting. So if it's been revised since then, I don't know about it. But on the very last page, page seven of this meeting's packet, line 41, it refers to Chair Francis adjourning the meeting, and I believe that should be Chair Gardner.
That's right. I see that also. Thank you for catching that, Commissioner Farrar. So page eight of our packet, line 41, "As there was no further business or discussion, Chair Francis adjourned the meeting at 11:02." Any other cor- corrections? All right, I'll take a motion in a second to adopt the minutes as corrected.
Well, I move that we accept the minutes of the February 9th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting as presented with the one near correction on the last line.
You have a second. Commissioner Orr has seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 See, I hear.
Can I just make a comment at this point? I'm not hearing Commissioner Orr's voice. I don't know if it's my system here or... Is anybody else having that problem? I don't hear him.
That's right. We can't hear you, Commissioner Orr. Sorry. Looks like he's getting the help he needs.
And I'm abstaining on this, I believe.
Yes, being absent. Thank you, Commissioner Strickland. I'm afraid we still can't hear you, Commissioner Orr. Let's just keep going. All right, I hear you. Do you want to go ahead and vote in support of that, those corrected minutes? If you want to just raise your hand. All right, so we have three commissioners, Gardner, Farrar, and Orr voting in support of adopting the minutes as corrected. Let's move on to our second set of minutes for the minutes of March 11th, 2021, Regular Planning Commission meeting. Does anyone have corrections to the second set of minutes? None from Commissioner Orr, Farrar, or Strickland? All right, if there's no corrections, we can go ahead and approve those as presented. Let's move on. Comprehensive Plan update. Would staff please provide that update? Ms. Henrickson.
Thank you. The committees are working on reviewing Goal Eight this month, which is recreational needs. You'll remember that the Planning Commission looked at that in February of this year, on February 9th. We also took it to the Recreational Lands Planning Advisory Committee on February 25th for their recommendations. And so they are moving forward with that. Next month, we'll be going back to Goal Seven, and we delayed review of Goal Seven simply to give time to have the Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan adopted by the Board of Commissioners, which was done in March. So now we will be taking the recommendations from that plan and incorporating that into Goal Seven and bringing that to the committees in Maine. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for staff or discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to project status, or sorry, special projects update. Ms. Henrickson?
Yes, so two updates from last month. The first one is that on February 20th, there will be a presentation at a work session with the Board of Commissioners to follow up on the short-term rental items that were discussed at the February 24th workshop. Just to be very clear, there will not be a discussion about banning short-term rentals or placing a moratorium or developing a cap. It simply addresses the six items that were discussed by the Board on February 24th. The second update that we have, we have related to the grant.
I'm sorry. Quite a bit of feedback. If maybe we could mute Commissioner Orr there, ironically. Okay, go ahead there. Sorry about that.
Okay, the second update relates to the Tsunami Evacuation Facilities Improvement Plan grant that we have. And on May 6th, at 5:30 PM, there will be a virtual public meeting that will be held. And we do not yet have the link from that, but that's being presented by the consultant who is in charge of the project, which is Parametrics, which is a company out of Portland. And those are the only two updates I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Farrar.
I have a quick question regarding the heading Strategic Plan. And in that, there's identification of the five areas of the strategic plan, and each of the county commissioners sort of leads that aspect of the plan. And two of the commissioners' names on there are former commissioners. I was wondering who the replacement commissioners are for social services and governments, if that's been decided.
I see Commissioner Toyuka has left, but to the best of my knowledge, there has not been reassignments. In the future, I'll remove those commissioner names so that there's no confusion. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion from the commissioners? I'll just note under the April 20th, Short-Term Rental Discussion, that in my conversations with a few people just recently, I think one of the things that's on the table is potentially doing away with the Arch Cape Short-Term Rental Ordinance, which is separate from the rest of the county. And one thing that's a big concern to the Arch Cape residents is losing the seven-day... You know, in Arch Cape, you can only rent your property once every seven days. So you can rent it for a week, or you can rent it two days of that week, but you can't rent like one day at a time. So you don't have people moving in and out seven separate days during a week. That's not the case in the rest of the county, so the county doesn't have that kind of protection for their communities. And so that's a big concern for Arch Cape in losing their their very customized to this community, short-term rental ordinance. Any other questions, or shall we move on? All right, let's go ahead and move on to Project Status Report. There is a status report in the Agenda Packet. Any questions or discussion around that, those projects? Nothing really new in that list, since we haven't seen an application in many months, so. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to other business.
Excuse me a moment. Is John perhaps muted by the person in charge of the meeting? We have IT down here, and they seem to think that maybe someone has muted him.
No, he's not muted by us.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for checking.
He's muted now. He, I think it showed him not as muted. He still couldn't hear him previously, so. All right, thanks for.
How about on my phone?
Ooh, I hear, we hear you.
Yeah, I'm talking on this telephone here.
All right, thank you. So sorry.
Now it's asking me on the screen, "Do I want to unmute myself?"
Try it.
Don't I want to unmute myself? Okay, I am now on mute. Can you hear me on your main?
Yes, we can.
Is this different from what you just heard coming from my phone?
It was louder. I think you might just stay on the phone, though. We can hear you better when you have the phone.
Okay, copy.
Yeah, sorry about that. All right, let's move on to other business. Discussion of the Draft Fiscal Year 2021 to 22 Work Plan. We have on page 16 of our packet Agenda Item Number Six. Would the, would staff please present that staff report?
Yes, so working with the Board of Commissioners and the County Manager, we have put together as part of our fiscal year 21, 22 budget requests, a draft work plan. And this would be something that is, would be a new process for us to work through. This year, it would be an abbreviated process where we begin now and hope to finish with the Board of Commissioners in June in time to begin implementing the work plan in July of 2021. Normally, this process would begin in September or October, where we would meet with the Board after they've worked through their strategic planning program for the upcoming fiscal year. We would put together a draft program as staff of work for the, for our department and for the Planning Commission to work on during the upcoming fiscal year, and then bring that to the Board for input, bring it to the Planning Commission for input, back to the Board, and then final adoption. So we did take this item to the Board on March 16th for review and input, and are bringing it to you as well at this meeting for your review and input. And we will incorporate that. We will go back to the Board for a work session on May 18th. And then following any final input from that work session, we would bring it back to the Board for adoption on June 9th, and then begin implementation on July 1st with the beginning of the new fiscal year. The items that are included in your packet are pretty much ranked in order of importance of what we'll be working on. The top projects include the Comprehensive Plan Update and working through that schedule, and then really focusing on the items from the strategic plan that was developed and approved last year by the Board. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from the commissioners?
It's possible I missed a work session opportunity. I'm not sure, but I was wondering if there was a work session ever scheduled between the county commissioners and the Planning Commission to discuss the Planning Commission's goals for the upcoming fiscal year. Seems like the Planning Commission should be involved at the very beginning of the process.
Yes, there has not been a joint meeting scheduled with the Board of Commissioners, and... So no, you did not miss it.
Is this strategic planning?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Strickland?
Is this primarily a Portland State-driven paid consultation process?
Ms. Henrickson?
Hatfield Center, or whatever it's called?
I'm afraid that I don't miss, or I don't understand your question. Are you asking, "Has staff paid a consultant to do what?"
No, not planning, but is the strategic planning currently driven by a consultant paid by the county who works for the Hatfield Center? Somehow, it seemed like they were doing a holding the hand over the county commission doing strategic planning and kind of wanted to keep at the trough from year to year. So, hi, John. Is that still the way it's planned to work? That strategic planning is not done really by planning. It's done guided by Portland State paid consultants?
Commissioner Strickland, I think this, this topic is really about strategic planning, which is different than this work plan that we're looking at right now. I think that's more of an appropriate conversation around the special projects update. So I'd like to focus on what we're, what we're talking about now, but.
I think that talking about strategic planning. And I think the question was probably that Chris raised was what's planning's role in planning, in strategic planning? And I guess my understanding is, no, our role has kind of been displaced by paying whatever $60,000 to Portland State University's Hatfield Center to guide the county commission through a strategic planning process, and kind of want to embed that as a routine procedure. And I, so I thought that's what we're currently talking about is strategic planning, not about a special project.
Yeah, I think as a clarification, that this is sort of a, there's like the strategic planning effort, kind of that bigger picture where we talked about the social services and the governance sections. And then this is maybe connected to it as the work plan. But I see your point in just that much of what historically, and if, you know, tell me if I'm wrong, but what historically the Planning Commission has weighed in on is now not as, you know, we're not being used in that same way during this.
Correct. We're the tail of the dog and really are pretty much irrelevant. And the role that we used to have is now hired out to Portland State for around $60,000 bucks a year, something of that nature. I'm not sure, John.
Commissioner Farrar, I'm sorry, did you have something else to say on the topic? I think there was a little bit of crossover there. Commissioner Orr, I can't really see your face, so I'm not sure if you're also interested in weighing in on any of these topics.
Yeah, I have some comments or questions on the topic. Should I go forward and?
Sure.
I request you use your phone.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So mute me on your end. And then I don't get that annoying echo.
There you go. That sounds great.
Is the echo gone?
Well, you know, the echo is not just you. I think it's something with the system, because I'm getting it also, so.
Maybe somebody else has their phone. Okay, well. So the thing that interested me as I listened to page 17 of this document.
I'm sorry, we lost you again, Commissioner Orr.
Okay, do you have me now?
Yes.
Okay, the thing that interested me on page 17 of the document was the part that indicated there would be an effort on the part of the county to conduct wetland delineations in particular graphic areas where wetlands are prevalent and provide other forms of assistance. That's very interesting to me, and I'm wondering, is that a significant potential budgetary item for the county?
Yes, staff is requesting $150,000 for the wetland delineations, and that would be beginning in fiscal year, I think, '22, '23.
That would be primarily.
I have forgotten.
Wait, sorry, let's just finish with Commissioner Orr here for a second, and then we'll move on to you, Commissioner Strickland. Thank you.
Thank you. So would it be, I think I saw something about a prioritization for this effort starting in the Jeffers Garden mile across the area because of the intensity of commercial development there. Is that right?
That's correct.
Where would you go after that? Any idea?
I have not identified with the committee where that might occur after that. We have not even started that item yet. We don't have the budget funding for it. So we have not prioritized beyond the upcoming fiscal year about where that program should be implemented next. Did you have recommendations?
Um. I no, I have to indicate that, you know, I work for Trails and Recovery, but we're engaged in some delineation there. And it just would make a lot of sense to have a holistic approach to the area. So I applaud the idea in general and taking into consideration potential biases in my capacity as general counsel for Trails and Recovery. That area is, of course, near Lewis and Clark River, and so it's pretty important for the water quality concerns to make sure that everybody is on the same page. Whereas currently, it's co-distracting that I go. Whereas currently, it's kind of hodgepodge. You go off a map. It's presumed, but not necessarily accurate. I applaud the efforts of the county to take this on and think it'll be good for the environment and do equity. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Strickland. And then we'll go to Commissioner Farrar.
I do not recall where the phraseology was, but I saw the expression "resiliency lands." And it's not a geological term with which I'm familiar. Does that ring a bell for anyone, the expression "resiliency land"? And can someone tell me what that means?
Ms. Henrickson, could you give a little background on that language?
Yes, if you could give me a moment, please. I need to pull it up. It was something that was added to the plan before it was approved in 2020. One moment, please. So this was added to the final draft report that was prepared for the Environmental Quality Focus Team for the Strategic Plan. And there is a footnote that was added that said resilient terrestrial lands, colon, "With a changing climate, many places may become degraded and lose species, but some places will retain high-quality habitat and continue to support a diverse array of plants and animals. Sites that have both complex topography and connected land cover are places where conservation is most likely to succeed in the long term. A complex topography provides many microclimates where species can move to adjust to a changing climate. A landscape that is permeable or free of barriers to movement allows species to take advantage of the diversity of local microclimates. Combining topo-climate diversity with local permeability provides a resilience metric that can be used to identify the most resilient occurrences of each land facet." And I believe that there was, that was... I'm not sure exactly where that came from. I'm not sure exactly where that came from. But that's what it was meant to mean.
So for those of you who are following along in the packet on page 23, E, Environmental Quality, Environmental Quality Action Team talks about inventorying these resilient lands throughout the county. Does that answer your question there, Commissioner Strickland?
No, I don't like confused it. You know, I think the language is bizarre and that that would have come out of a public process. It seems so early improbable. It doesn't sound like common parlance.
I strongly agree with Commissioner Orr.
Thank you for those comments. Commissioner Farrar, do you still have questions or comments?
Yes, I have a general one. I had I had the idea that we were reviewing the draft work program in its entirety. And yet we kind of jumped ahead to one specific section. I had thought we might just go through almost page by page because I have comments on almost every page. They're not extensive, but they're there. And some are just for my clarification and some are points that I think should be considered. But since we are on, we're on a discussion of the use of county resources to assist potential developers in mapping wetlands and surveying for flood elevations. I was just kind of curious. How will it be determined what area will be focused on? Because whatever area is focused on, people with land that's potentially to be developed in those areas get a real benefit if the county is going to spend over $100,000 defraying the cost of development. People with land there get a real advantage over other landowners elsewhere in the county. And so it's possible that's a good plan. If the county has certain areas that they want to focus, encourage and focus development on, then that would certainly help do that. But for people in Westport or Brownsmead or Spenson or Jewel or some other communities, they might see it as our tax dollars are going to a special group. And I think that this whole concept should be brought up in a public meeting where people can, from all across the county, can chime in with their ideas about the whole concept. And then I, as I think Commissioner Orr asked, would like to know, you know, where, what's next in line, which places are viewed as the most likely places to funnel county money into. And a related question to that process is if the county actually maps out the wetlands, pays to have it done and maps out surveying the hundred-year flood heights, is that some way of saying that this is the bottom line? Don't argue with us. This is what we're going by. Don't take us to court on it. Wetlands here and we're going to treat it as a wetland. Or the flood plain's here and you're going to have to build within accordance of that. What does the county get back out of this deal? I mean, I think it's appropriate for the county to encourage needed development and expansion of services and all those things. But I feel like this kind of been kind of stuck into this plan without a lot of discussion. Now, maybe I've missed that discussion and it's my own fault. But if I've missed it, I think probably a lot of other county residents have missed it as well. And so I call for this to be something that's publicized and given an opportunity for wide public comment because it's rather far reaching. And I'll leave my comments on that one to those that I just gave. But I will say that I'd like to go through the plan kind of point by point. And I have just a few annoying little editorial comments about the format of the plan that I found a little confusing that maybe you could just tweak a little bit and make it easier document for somebody to pick up and go through. Thank you.
Commissioner Farrar, thank you for those comments. I might suggest, just like in previous meetings, that any edits, I did see type and formatting and things like that not be discussed here. But you send those and email to staff. And if we can try to have discussions about kind of larger issues and then send those if you have specific recommendations, send those via email. I think that would be the most efficient use of your time, but also the most effective and staff considering changes to the plan before it goes back to the county commission. Other commissioners?
I found only about 30% of that that I decipher. I think there's something wrong with my sound system here. I'm just not hearing your voice clearly.
I'm afraid it's not yours. It's everybody's. Mine is echoing as well. Ms. Hendrickson.
Yes, I put in the chat box, but if Commissioner Orr will push star six on his phone, that will mute and unmute it and I think will help cut the feedback.
Okay, I'll work on that.
Yes.
Let's go ahead and we can just kind of walk through a little bit here. Maybe starting with page 22 of the packet, which is, if that's okay, if that makes sense. I feel like we have pretty good understanding of the comprehensive plan section, which is the first there unless there's comments from the commissioners on that. Number two is about governance process and community engagement, which of course is a big topic for us in terms of comprehensive planning and other outreach, North Coast Business Park, regulatory barriers and gaps, as we've already been talking about. Environmental quality, as we've been already talking about. Any questions or comments regarding those sections, page of the packet, 22, 23? It looks like 24. Yes, Commissioner Farrar?
Unfortunately, my page numbers don't match with the version you're using. So that may interject a little difficulty here. But I want to just jump back one one section to the very beginning of the land use planning document. And on my copy, it's page 15, but it lists the fiscal year accomplishments, which I found very helpful to look through that and kind of reminisce about some of those things. But I was just wondering, at the bottom of the page I'm looking at, you list the number of and types of land use permits that were given by the county. And my only question is, is that available somehow to see in a map? Where you can see which properties and what type of process they went through countywide? Is that something I can bring up on a map?
No, sir. At this time, we do not have that mapped. And some of them will not map. For example, a type four, which was the co-consolidation project. We don't have a way to map that because it's not tied to a specific property.
Okay. Then moving on to the sections in the strategic plan that I believe we were going to discuss. Just going back for a minute, I left out one comment regarding the economic development evaluation of regulatory barriers and gaps discussion. And where it discusses the idea of the mapping of the wetlands and so forth. I just wonder if that process shouldn't also, and I'm not sure how this, the strategic groups work together, but it seems like there should be some communication between the economic development group and the environmental group of that strategic plan over something that's definitely environmental, but it's also business related. So I don't know if, I can make it complex and convoluted and maybe botch everything up. But it just seems like some of these different five-part strategic plan groups would benefit by interacting once in a while with each other to get some cross-pollination of ideas on those. So is that part of the overall view of the commissioners to anyone's knowledge here? That the five groups will they'll communicate with one another when appropriate? Or do they act separately?
Ms. Hendrickson?
I cannot speak for the other groups, nor can I speak for the Board of Commissioners. I would imagine that as needed, that there would be cross-pollination. Again, this is in the very beginning stages of being implemented and really won't begin to be fully implemented until July of 2021. And this is the first time that many of us as staff are working through this process, as is the board, some of the board members working through this process. So while we appreciate your comments, I don't know that I have an answer with 100% clarity, Commissioner Farrar, as to exactly in detail how it will be implemented.
Okay, well, that's fine because I, you know, this agenda item is to discuss and give feedback. And that's all I'm doing. I'm not giving it a thumbs up or thumbs down. I think overall, the process is a good idea and it's got some real good possibilities here. So I'm just throwing out comments and thinking on it that might help to smooth it out and just expand the thinking about it. That's all.
Since we're talking about, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Since we're talking about this wetland delineation one, I'm going to go ahead and share my thoughts on it. I, this was one that really jumped out to me as well. I do think it's important to support businesses that support our communities. So ones that provide in particular family wage jobs to community members. But, you know, this seems definitely like a particular area. And there's, you know, maybe some, maybe some of the business along there can use some help and will provide those things. But I think it's really important that those things be tied together. And so and just acknowledging that when people buy land, it's priced by what, you know, how developable it is effectively. And so if they're in a vulnerable place that has wetlands or theoretically is potentially going to get flooded, it's reflected in the price. And so what we're doing is, you know, paying for the difference between a developable lot and a property that's not as developable. So we should just be very careful about doing that. You know, maybe enriching people who are already rich enough at the expense of some of our lower income members. So we want to make sure that if we are gifting, that we, our communities get something in return. But I also think in terms of emergency preparedness, that some of these areas are very vulnerable to earthquake, which is going to happen within 50 years. And our tsunami, which will come eventually. And sea level rise, which is already in process and larger storm events. And so do we want to be effectively subsidizing properties in areas that we know are vulnerable to those kinds of natural hazards and unnatural hazards in the case of climate change? So I do really think that this needs to be really well thought out. And if we're going to spend the money, really link that money to true benefits to especially our lower income working families that are really suffering right now, especially under the COVID crisis. So I'd like to make sure that we're not encouraging development in vulnerable areas and enriching the already rich in that way as well. I'd rather see $150,000 go towards affordable housing and childcare and the class of community college, training people to get into better jobs than something that might not translate into those kinds of things, those kinds of support for our community members. Commissioner Orr, could you turn on your phone? How do you unmute it? You've done star six, Ms. Hendrickson. How do you unmute on his phone?
Yes, as I put in the chat box, star six will mute and unmute the phone.
Okay, star six, Commissioner Orr. Still can't hear you. Gosh.
How about now?
Oh, now, yes.
Yeah, in reference to Commissioner or Chair Gardner's last comment, I think that there is an upside for the county in clarifying what lands are wet. It does potentially increase the tax base of the county if the presumptive wetland inventory overstate the prevalence of wetlands in areas such as Jeffers Gardens. I don't know if that's the case, but I could see that the tax base would be assisted. It could probably, it could go the other way as well. But it could also open up land to use by their current owners that is otherwise prohibited. And that could be of benefit, looking on the upside anyway.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Orr. I see your point. Commissioner Farrar, did you want to move forward in the document?
Yes, I would like to take up. Since my page numbers don't agree with most people's, I'll refer to it as item E. In the, I think it immediately follows the wetland discussion. And it's in environmental quality, from the Environmental Quality Action Team. And I had a comment about the first item there that's identified as I. And it talks about prior, the last sentence of that, actually, it's in item double I. The last sentence reads priority should be given to freshwater resources or, yeah, freshwater sources. To me, that, I think what's intended there is talking about a human supply, a water supply that would be used for human needs, either for drinking water or industrial uses or possibly even agriculture. But just simply stating freshwater sources makes it rather unclear because you could look at the water that's needed in streams for habitat, fisheries and so on as freshwater also. So I would recommend that that be, that statement there about freshwater sources be clarified because it's not very definite what's meant there. So that's just a comment on clarifying it, making it more useful to the public at large. Moving down through there. Moving down through there, it it talks about this Environmental Quality Action Team and what they'll take up. And it mentions the composition of the team and that includes members drawn from Educational and Water Resource Agency organizations, Business Community, County Staff, and that they will order inventories and review of existing studies. I'm I'm wondering, what is the role of the Business Community in that particular action team? Is is that, it it seems as though that would be more something that would be taken up in the 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 economic development part of the the strategic plan, that the business members would talk in that arena of what what they see as the important things to look at. And that in the environmental quality end, it would be more resource people, resource agencies and organizations and science agencies within the state and county and so on. I don't know if anybody has any comments on that. That may be just kind of my problem in getting a clear idea what some of these first statements really include. Well, if nobody has a comment on that, I'll move right along to a more significant point that I'd like. I'd like the county really to think carefully about. And that's under item F, the Environmental Quality Water Assessment Focus on Clats of Plains. And by the way, I participated in in the group that took this matter up. And I agree with most of what's in here. However, with respect to this item, which is a tier two A item, so it's not likely to be taken up at least for another fiscal year. But it starts off by saying initiate a moratorium, no building homes within septic systems on less than one acre in the Clats of Plain area. And while I'm all for getting ahead of a problem and cutting it off before it develops, I'm not sure what you'd base that kind of seat of the pants judgment that that one acre is too small. What size is big enough to have a septic tank and a water system? And so I think some more careful planning around what to do there needs needs to be taken up. And so there's, there's the, I think there's some money going to be set aside in 2021, 22 fiscal year to actually start a study, a water study in that area. It seems like you'd need that water study unless there's something already on the books that's good enough to justify that moratorium on the lot size that could be developed there.
Commissioner Farrar, I'm just going to interrupt you for a minute to to welcome Commissioner Lam, who's joined us. And to let you know that we're part, we're at the bottom of the agenda here under other business. We're looking at number six, discussion of draft fiscal year 21, 2021, 22 work plan, and we're walking through the document there at the end of the packet, starting with page. Well, if those numbers on the top are what you're using, like page 19. And we're looking at page like 22 or so now. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Farrar. You can continue.
Anyway, I think that's, I think that's my complete comment on 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 item F. I just urge a little more caution in the order in which things are done there. And if we're going to go through these item by item, then I'll have just a quick comment to say about the next item, item G, but I'll I'll wait to see if somebody else says something they want to say about F.
Any other comments and questions on those sections above G from the other commissioners? Commissioner Strickland, you might have the means on lots of planes?
Just just briefly. Chris was moving along because he didn't hear any other comments. And I was basically supporting what he was saying. You know, the bit of puzzlement about the I can always find connection, but the role of the business community in these terms of environmental action committees. Yet, you know, there's plenty of reason to have business involved in environmental questions. And and one of the more basic ones that is carefully avoided is what is our goal population wise in the county as an economic matter? I would love to hear someone say, you know, in a position of of power, gee, a half million people would just be phenomenal. Or 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 something that isn't afraid of connecting to what is nationwide talk of climate migration on on these maps of that are currently not stating for not forecasting gloom and doom, but expressing gloom and doom that we, you know, most of the of the nation, most of the West, Southwest is drought. And and it happens that that we're we're the lucky ones who are often this corner where people left because they couldn't stand the rain. And and we're the only little tiny coastal strip that gets to stay green. So I'm, I concur, but I I also like to hear what's the thinking behind wanting business in there in this environmental action team? Is is there an attitude, an agenda? You know, I've certainly been a businessman all my life. And you know, I I don't think there's a conflict there, but I I I would like to hear what the thinking is behind it, you know? It's it's hard to hear at any level questioning growth as, you know, it it it'll be unacceptable to say that a growth, that that economic growth is questionable as a good thing. And yet, it's so fundamentally oxymoronic that it is sustainable. And yet, we'll never be talked about. You know, your highest level of conversations in the country. You will never hear that sustainable growth is that that kind of eases smaller, not continuously more of everything. Yeah, I I would love to hear thoughts, you know, from from John and others here locally who are in business.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Strickland, thank you. And I, since this has come up a couple of times, I might ask Ms. Hendrickson to respond to the question. So we're looking at Environmental Quality, Environmental Quality Action Team, which is a group that's going to come together and consist of members from agencies, business community, and staff to inventory and review existing studies just to identify where further analysis and studies are needed. And so the question is, for a committee like that with that purpose, why add business representation?
Yeah, I think the intent, and again, Commissioner Farrar was also on this committee, and he may remember more as well, but I think the only intent was to create a diverse group that would be on the committee. I don't think it was any nefarious plot to try and establish a half million population in the county, so.
Commissioner Orr, or Commissioner Lam, if you have any comments on any of this, otherwise we'll move on to fire protection.
Well, I guess my concern is that as far as wetlands concerned, wetland function as sponges to soak up excess water. And when you develop the the land, they, we can't, we can never get this wetland back. And I'm wondering if the environmental study is involved in that to to preserve the wetland for the sake of wetland?
I think the the question is versus wetlands in order to develop wetlands, wetland delineation in order to fill wetlands. Is that the question? Yeah.
Well, I I guess my concern is that, yeah, at what point do we say enough is enough of development and preserving the wetland for for the environment and animals' sake? And to be able to let the land absorb the water when we get so much water coming in from during the, there's a storms in the winter rather than just flooding, getting getting floods developing, become sponges to absorb excess water.
From a flood, yeah, flood mitigation also. That benefits people, but also, yeah. I saw a hand up there. Commissioner Farrar.
Yeah, this this quickly on Commissioner Qualm's re discussion there. I I agree that a lot of consideration should be to given to leaving wetlands alone and the idea of mitigating by allowing building in wetlands, filling them in, and then just making a new wetland somewhere else is you know, it's of limited use really because wetlands require hundreds of years to thousands of years to develop. And trying to just build an artificial one somewhere else to replace the acreage of a natural one is is somewhat arrogant. It just doesn't work that way. And the other thing about changing the location is there's a reason that wetlands are where they are naturally. And that's for the reasons that Commissioner Lam was talking about, that they absorb water in lowland areas. They're part of a natural topography. They're part of the hydrologic system. So they work best where they are naturally. And to ignore that just means you make problems elsewhere. And so I wish the county could tolerate the idea that there are some places that are best left natural because they serve a very important function. It's not to restrict development. It's just to say that they're good places to develop, and then there's places that aren't so good. And there's good places for wetlands and natural systems. And it's best when you leave them alone because they really function well. They function better than any human made system that's done to replace them. The other thing about taking wetlands out is you're going to release carbon to the atmosphere when you do it. Their carbon sinks. And so when you stop the process, the carbon begins to oxidize and it turns to CO2 and methane and it goes into the atmosphere. So everybody's heard these stories. They're tired of it, so I'll quit talking about it. But I did leave out one comment about the Clats of Plain Study Area and the water study that should be done. And I forgot to add that in the last lines of the paragraph that discusses that, they're on the packet page 19 or this up at the top right-hand corner of the page, there's a 23 stamp. At any rate, there it says that it's it's talking mainly about wastewater and groundwater, which is the source out there for potential homeowners. And then it throws in the comments, study should also include surface water, which is very true because surface water and groundwater in shallow systems are essentially one thing. Just some of it you see on the surface and the rest of it's underground. They're they're interconnected. But I wanted to add there or 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 recommend that in addition, you add a comment that the ocean be considered, the seawater interface with the freshwater system in a sandy shore zone is important to consider because as any development of the freshwater system occurs, there'll be a movement of the boundary between the saltwater and the freshwater. And in some coastal areas, that has led to a very serious contamination problem and essentially wrecked the freshwater resource. So it needs to be definitely considered and and caution used there. I'm not, I'm not saying that the groundwater is unavailable for use. I think you'll find there is groundwater to be used there. So I'm not going to put the brakes on development here by throwing in another dangerous environmental consequence. I'm just saying you need to think about it. It's very important so that you don't wreck a good resource that we may have there.
All right, I'm going to suggest we move forward the next few sections. We have fire protection education, visitor education, and then we get into housing. Any comments or questions about those? Commissioner Farrar?
Surprise, surprise. On the fire protection education thing, I was just going to make a comment that you really need to engage some people from the electric utility companies into this discussion. If you look at the statistics, the most damaging and highest number of wildfires in the last decade or two have been caused by electrical utility lines. And I have electrical utility lines to my house. I use electricity. I like electricity. I think electricity is very cool. But I think we all need to be practical about the hazards that those electrical lines can create and that they've been responsible for some very terrible fires. So we want to involve the electrical utility company in in that discussion area, I believe.
I might just add in on that one, you know, I I think that fire protection education is great. And I think we do especially have some rules or like actual regulations around defensible space, especially those zones that are for in forest land. But more and more, we're going to have, how do we deal with smoke? So even if we don't have fire in our own communities, there's a lot of vulnerable people to smoke. And so how, you know, are we planning for that? There's nothing, you know, we just had a precursor this summer, thank goodness, COVID was enough, but last, the summer before, the summer before or so. Thank you, Commissioner Farrar. Visitor education, and then let's go to housing strategies. And forming a working group to develop strategies in terms of development of public nonprofit and affordable housing units. Any comments or questions about that? That's a big one coming out of the affordable housing study. I was glad to see that. Okay.
Can't resist that tiny comment, you know, what you mean by affordable housing, you know, the, the term is never quantified as, you know, as far as I know. When you do pull it out, they may say, well, gee, quarter million dollars is affordable housing. Yeah, because all the other housing is so much more. So it's kind of, I, I think it's that usual avoidance of glib vacuous statements. Affordable to whom? Period. You know, I, I was just in the discussion with architects who who think they're really focused on affordable housing. But they are in a society where these begin to balk when the condos cost over 1.2 million. You know, when I, I went to a warrant and guy who was building tiny homes. And, you know, his tiny homes were a quarter million dollars. You know, is, you know, what, what, what do you mean by affordable housing? You're like on the population. What do you mean? You know, I'm not advocating for a half million population. I'd like to know, would people like to see the population double? Simply double, triple. You know, because it gets a, it's one of those off the table logical consequences of what we do. And, and what we do is somewhat based on what our desires are, you know, we and I, I just love, I'd love to hear, yes, all yours, Nadia.
Okay, Commissioner Strickland, thank you for that. It's important to understand definitions and I understand like when people are talking about affordable housing versus workforce housing versus just housing. You know, what are those definitions are important. So I'll just ask Ms. Hendrickson, in this case, when they talk about affordable housing, are they talking about subsidized housing?
I don't know the answer to that question, Cherry Gardner.
Okay, so that's, so having those definitions, maybe that's the comment from the, from the commission is just that it's really important to understand, you know, are we talking about just, you know, regular tract homes being affordable housing? Are we talking about subsidized housing? I know in Cannon Beach, having subsidized housing has been critical to they're continuing to have a workforce that actually lives in the city. If they hadn't done that in the eighties, there wouldn't be any, basically. So those need to be a high priority for all of our communities as we go forward. Okay, let's keep moving. We've got three more pages to this document. It is 1114. So what are the big picture, really important things that we, you want to comment on before we move on to the last thing, which is pretty substantial also in terms of road standards? Commissioner Orrin, Lam, Strickland, Farrar. All right, I'll do one. But it sounds like there's a, Chris, no?
Others quickly say, I, I like a, a lot of the ideas here. I'm all for improving broadband infrastructure, especially I think that's critical for our county. We've seen that in the past year. We've seen it at this meeting, actually. The need for better electronic connections throughout the county. And so I'm all for that. I did notice that on several of the social service items, there's where, where in red lettering, it says required resources, often the, the result of that is none. And so I'm wondering how any of these really get done if no resources are being allocated in terms of staff time or money. I, I know this is a planning document, so maybe those boxes are going to be filled in over time, but to get any of this done, it, 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 it won't just happen by writing about it here. So that would be my only comment on, on social services. They seem to have received rather small amounts of staff time and, and funding compared to some of the other things we discussed.
Ms. Hendrickson, would you like to reply to that?
I would just point out that the items that are in here are all the items that are in the strategic plan. Some of them will not affect planning. Which is why you'll see staff contribution, no staff involvement has been identified at this time. Followed by required resources, none. Which means our, our department, which is what this document was drafted for in conjunction with working with the planning commission. We are not involved in that particular process of the strategic plan implementation. Therefore, we don't have a need to request any resources. It doesn't mean that other departments may not be requesting the resources needed. But it's not coming through the community development department.
Okay, I'm going to take this moment to make a comment and, and say that there are a lot of really great things in this document that I was, it's just, it's wonderful actually to see all the work that our planning and other county staff are doing. And I really appreciate them and, and the work that you do be behind the scenes because especially this year, we don't see any of it for the most part. I would say, I just, the, the first thing that I found in this document that was of interest was about community engagement. As you know, that's of interest to me and it just notes new and diverse media. And I'll, and I'll give a nod to county staff again for the Facebook use. And so I see a lot of the county communications, not just from the planning department, but from the, the larger administration and from the public health department. I think it's a really effective way to reach more indifferent people. But I'm 46 and I'll tell you that anybody younger than me doesn't use Facebook. In fact, they use Twitter, which I, I, I personally don't want to do, but they tell me that it's not an effective way to reach younger people. So it's important that the county think about all the people of the county, not just these small niches on these particular platforms. And think about how to reach them. And so really doing a community engagement plan that looks at how do we reach not just narrow bands of the people. So those of us who are engaged in, in politics and committees tend to be the most privileged in our communities. So how do we reach the people who are maybe not as privileged? How do we reach younger people? And of course, at this time, we're particularly interested in how do we reach more Black Indigenous people of color? And in our counties being 15 to 20% Latinx. How do we reach them? That's our largest people of color community. Bilingual or even multilingual community. And it's, I think we need to be very thoughtful in this moment, moving forward on being broader in the way that we communicate with, keep with the public. So we haven't yet had an opportunity to, to meet with Conejo Hispano. And of course, they're very busy and it's not their job to, to educate us, but I think that if staff has the time to, 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 to meet with them, they meet, they have other meetings at the time of this meeting. It would be really a great way to get that work started. You know, what, what are these communities interested in? How can we best at least inform them if not invite engagement on particular topics? Thank you for that. I'll also note that the consolidation of the Arch Cape and broader short-term rental ordinances in here. And, you know, double up on my note that Arch Cape is worried about that. And then at the end of the work plan. Well, I'll note, great about the planning commission having an orientation. I think that's really important. But at the end of the document, there's a discussion about the planning commission and our role and how we work on, how we work on things and I mean, I see, so first of all, like, like most committees for the county or all committees for the county, we're all volunteers and we're doing this because we care about the, the, the the communities in which we live, the larger county. And so, and we also come with a lot of history and knowledge and culture and connections. And so I'd like to think of us as an asset to the county. And, and you know, especially not to those members that have been on the committee for so long. Unfortunately, we lost Bruce Francis and we lost Merna Patrick, but still have Commissioner Strickland and, and the others, those of us who are newer, that bring our own experience and knowledge to the plate and and I say like for myself, I welcome the opportunity to work with the county commission. And to figure out how to best and communicate and, and utilize that's the skill sets that we have and the knowledge that we have as the planning commission. I think we're all on this because we're nerdy about planning and, and the county commission has like so much, a broad breadth of things to deal with. And so we, we hope to like be able to provide important information. And recommendations to the county commission. And it worries me in this discussion at the end of this document that it sounds like, like I do feel like over the last year, we've had less and less to deal, to do besides the county, the comp plan update. But it, it feels to me in this language at the end that going forward, we'll have kind of less agency to say, this is of interest to us and we'd like to bring these recommendations forward. Instead, the commission and staff will direct us what they want us to do. And so I would love to have a more iterative relationship between staff and the county commission and planning commission and and have some of these joint work sessions that we've talked about in the past, but haven't, haven't gotten to. So that we can have that kind of relationship and we can really utilize the volunteer time and knowledge that we have to provide to the county.
Question.
Strickland.
While we are such a small threat to others here to others in the power structure. Would it be a good time for us to expand our numbers? You know, like the plausibility, if they had 25 people in the Elk Solutions team. Would it make sense to have 21 people on the planning commission? You know, and, and kind of make some effort to have you know, some additional minds pulled, pulled in. I'm, I'm just raising it as an idea of like adding to the Supreme Court. You know, say, since, since we're so increasingly meaningless, gee, if we increase our numbers, would we be more meaningful? Period.
Well, another idea is some of these, there's all these new committees being created in the county. And so I'm not sure why there's a bunch of new committees if some of that work can actually be done here, or we could have subcommittees ourselves where we have some of us and also some of the public so that we're continuing to be relevant. Yes, Commissioner Farrar.
I, I don't like the idea of a planning commission and reaching more than about seven, possibly nine. Not as low as five. So seven seems like a real good number, but I will say that expanding input to the commission could do a lot of good. And when you have an sort of, I don't know if it's ad hoc or what the Elk Plan Committee was, but there you're dealing with a specific problem and trying to bring in a lot of minds with different expertises and come up with a, a nice plan. So that makes sense. But for the planning commission, I think it'd be great if we could somehow preserve the citizen advisory committees that are engaged in the rewrite of the comprehensive plan. And they represent different geographical areas of the county. So they bring in all parts and if those could in some way be preserved and from time to time, this planning commission would meet with one or more of those groups or all of them at once. That would be a good way of expanding the county citizens' participation in the overall process without making the planning commission itself kind of cumbersome to get anything done with. I mean, just between Commissioner Strickland and myself, we, we take at least an hour of the meeting just blabbing on. So I'll be quiet now.
All right. Unless, I think I'm going to wrap up this discussion here. Does anybody have any final comments or questions for staff? On this document, I, I really encourage you to read it carefully and put together an email with any points that you have for staff so that they can consider your wise, intelligent perspectives. When moving this forward. All right, let's go ahead and move on to number seven, our review of the proposed revisions to the county partition and subdivision regulations. And the county's roadway construction standards. Now, this was an exciting one. And would staff please present the staff report?
Okay, so this is something that planning staff has been working with public works staff on for several years. It's really just an attempt to update how we process our subdivision applications. Bringing what's in the code in line with actual practice on the ground, bringing it in line with ORS requirements. Also trying to clarify the road requirements, which is probably one of the biggest areas of confusion that we can run into with people who are in the process of partitioning their property or subdividing their property. And so with us today, we do have Terry Hendricks, who's the Assistant Public Works Director, and also Vance Swenson, who's the County Surveyor. And they're both here. They helped prepare the proposed revisions. And we're here to answer basically any questions that you might have on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Hendrickson, and thank you to the additional commissioner, county staff that's joined us. I appreciate taking time out of your busy schedule to visit with us. Do we have questions for any of them from the commissioners? Or discussion? Commissioner Farrar.
I have a quick question about definition. It may be in the packet here and I missed it somehow. But I wondered if somebody could for me clarify the difference between a public road and a county road. I'm sure those are defined somewhere.
Yes. So a public road is one, unless Terry, let's go ahead. I saw he had his light off. Okay. You can correct me if I misstate, but a public road is one that is open and available to use for the public, but not maintained by the county. It's a maintained by the adjacent property owners. And a county road would be one that's been accepted and is constructed to the standards for the, the county standards accepted by the board. And is maintained by the county.
Other questions and comments? What I noted is a lot of the, the changes were simply clarifications, but where you got into some changes is when you looked at sizes of right of way and road, there were some changes to those. And that's when you come to substances, what I thought was more substantive, substantive change. And so for example, on page 80 of the packet, which is section 3.9850. Minimum construction standards for private roads went from 12 to 14 feet wide and then right of way is significantly larger than that. I'll say, of course, living in Arch Cape, we have a little bit of everything. Most of our roads are, well, it's really like, probably, I don't know, Terry knows, it's probably half and half. Public and private roads, very few county roads. And then of course, highway want to run, runs right through it. And the size of the street surface and the right of way is something of big concern to a community like ours where we have effectively a suburb, as you know, and but limited parking and lots of vacation rentals. And so that's when you run into some conflict, like how do you make sure roads are large enough that make sure roads are large enough that fire trucks can run through them if needed, heaven forbid, but also not kind of overbuild a community that's not a city, an actual city. So so those are the kinds of things. I know a big road just came in, went in Tom and Kate Merle's subdivision. I think it's a subdivision road off Highway one oh one. And I think that one ended up being like a hundred feet wide. Is that right? And that's a significant road in Arch Cape. It's like a highway. Any questions or comments on those? Oh, Terry, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I just had a comment that a lot of the roads in the Arch Cape area, even though there is the standard, most of those roads down there, because of the time that they were plotted, have a forty-foot right-of-way on them. Unfortunately, through our, through the different planning directors that we've had over the years, when the roads were put in, they weren't put into what we would call current standards. And so most of those roads down in that area are anywhere from ten to fourteen foot wide gravel roads. Unfortunately, if you look at the standards, even before they were changed, you will see that most of those roads should have been a minimum A fourteen or excuse me, A twenty, and they should have been paved. So we're fighting a constant battle in areas where we have these old subdivisions. And Sunset Beach is another area that is similar to Arch Cape where they were, those subdivisions were created in the late eighteen nineties or early nineteen hundreds. And so the standards have changed dramatically. The development has occurred over a number of years. And so it's kind of a hodgepodge of what's actually there versus the standards that you see.
So then what do you do with like, kind of this grandfathered-in community, like, you know, those two communities with, you know, really it needs what in A twenty paved road, but it has only the space for a fourteen foot?
Well, we have some discretion that is written into the ordinance. If we take the area out in Jewel, for instance, we just recently had a road out there that somebody wanted to extend six hundred feet. They went through a subdivision that would have required an A twenty road. Because it was a subdivision of over ten lots, it would have really required to be paved. That was on the back end of Elderberry Lane, if I remember right. But there's not a paved road in that subdivision, and most of them are only ten feet wide gravel. That's what the people, when they moved in there, wanted, and that's what they have. We've recently, down in Arch Cape area, over the last two years have taken and at the request of the fire chief, have started a vegetation control management process down there with the monies that we have through the transit room tax to take and work on those public roads, to do some vegetation control managements. It's not a lot of money, but there is some money there that allows us to do that. But these older subdivisions and the ones that are especially that are out in the rural areas that were developed because people wanted to live there are virtually all substandard.
Commissioner, let's see, let's start with Commissioner Strickland.
The mention that gravel roads are charming, effectively. You know, like, I don't know how attitudes have shifted, but there in Cannon Beach, there was simply no desire to pave a lot of the residential gravel streets because that was the charm of the town. So I, I think the idea that paving is automatically what we hope to achieve. I don't know how widely accepted that is. You know, the the substandard is, in a way, the charm of the area. And 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 it would be, I think, plenty of agreement that making it standard out here in the country is not a slippery slope, but it's a direct going to hell of the charm. You know, so it's an interesting thing that I, again, I don't think, I'm not against something being a standard. But I I think that underlying question of what's our idea of heaven? Is it all the roads being paved? Is is worth the pause? Period.
Thank you, Commissioner Strickland. Can I just ask, before I get to you, Commissioner Farrar, that you, that Terry, could you do me a favor and do you have that table three point two in front of you? Maybe Ms. Hendrickson can pull it up or Adams. But I just
Are you referring to page eighty-three?
Yeah, page eighty-three, yes.
Okay.
So those, those are the proposed changes, like in short, it looks like to me. And I'm just wondering, so like, so local there is that, is that A twenty that you were talking about? And so historically, it was twenty-four. Now it's twenty. And that the, actually, the right-of-way width went is proposed to go down. Is that right?
That's correct. The roads that we have taken in or the only road basically that we've taken into the county road system through an LID was only a twenty-five, a twenty-foot wide asphalt road. And that's where we've done, we've made a differentiation between A and a G for asphalt versus gravel, because there was some some problem in discerning which which standard we needed to promote. And so we are dropping that. The A twenty-four was the minimum standard that was set out by the board in the nineties. And that was what all of our roads were constructed to. Now the commission has directed that the A twenty-eight standard is our minimum standard for a collector.
Okay. And so these are the county roads. And then below are the the other ones, the public and private. And so these ones are just kind of revert, they refer to when there's new development, but they don't, are we changing anything on public and private that are already existing?
Well, we are changing, we're changing the A twelve standard that was was previously utilized was changed by the state fire marshal back in, I think it was two thousand and ten. Went from an A twelve to an A fourteen for a minimum standard. And so, you know, that's, that's probably the biggest change that has been mandated. Everything else is is based on on use and ASHTO recommendations.
And in our rural areas, the vast majority of roads are in this category, right? The public
We have, we have approximately two hundred and thirty miles in the county road system. About about fifteen to twenty miles are the, what we would consider probably the A fourteen. They're mostly roads that extend off of the end of an asphalt or an oil mat road and go up into the resource lands, up into the logging areas. But everything, most everything else is surfaced. The public roads, I don't have an exact mileage on on them in the county, but I would imagine it's closer closer to three hundred to three hundred and fifty miles of roads.
Thank you for that. That's good clarification. Commissioner Farrar.
Yeah, I was just curious about a couple of things going back to that table. I was unclear what in the first column there, ADT refers to.
That's the average daily traffic is what ADT stands for.
The other thing I wondered, a lot is made of the width of the road and the surface, the surfacing, and then the diagrams in the few figures that follow that table are helpful. But I don't see anywhere where it really describes what load these roads are designed to handle, the weight. Is that a factor in these? Or they virtually handle the weight of any commercial vehicle that's out there?
Virtually, they'll handle the weight of whatever is going to come across them. The the twelve-foot of base that that we have and four inches of three-quarter minus on top of that is the standard design that we use on all of our roads when we reconstruct them. Where we take and we've changed the standard a little bit to increase the amount of AC that is going down on a road that is anticipated to be brought into the county road system due to the higher ADT and the weight loads that we anticipate. Before, it was just three inches of asphalt, and now we're, we're going to require four for anybody that is anticipating such as a subdivision or an LID to be accepted into the county road system.
Okay, the the other thing I was wondering is there's toward the end of this section, there's quite a bit of new wording related to one heading is public roadway construction in existing flatted subdivisions. And I, I tried to read through this, make sense of it. And I'm wondering, did I get the correct impression that if a subdivision exists now with kind of substandard roads leading in and out, and there's an enlargement of that subdivision beyond the road system currently available, is is the ordinance as as laid out here in this document, will it require that the entire road system be improved up to current standards? Is is that partly what's being done here to try to deal with the grandfathered ones that may have kind of substandard roads? And and upgrade them all?
No. A developer that's moving into one of these old subdivisions, and let's say he's going to develop three or four blocks, he is considered the developer. And so where he's actually developing the road from that point on has to adhere to the the new or the standards that are in place at the time. He's not required to build the whole road up to that point.
Okay. Then just a final comment on kind of going back to Commissioner Strickland's discussion about the the quaint old country roads and all. And maybe somebody will have a comment with with some data on this. I don't know. But certainly gravel roads must cause more wear and tear of tires and suspension systems of vehicles because they they tend to get rougher quicker than a paved surface road. And it's been found, I think fairly recently, that the particles coming off the tires getting into streams is really hazardous to fish. And so even though, yeah, I kind of like old dirt roads and I've got four-wheel drive vehicles and things. But a lot of people today aren't driving those kind of roads very much. They don't know how to do it very well. They can get going sideways on a gravel road and then go into a ditch. So there's a lot of reasons why roads sort of need to be improved as people kind of lose touch with how to be out in the back country on their own without getting into trouble. And the environmental damage done by having a substandard road, putting more sediment into streams and tire particles and automobiles overturned into streams and all those things. So I don't know if anybody has any statistics on that, but it does seem that paving roads does have an environmentally positive side. And I I don't seem to be just kind of in conflict this morning, but I'll just identify those thoughts for consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrar. Any other questions or comments for county staff? Great opportunity. Ask everything you always wanted to know about county roads. All right. Well, with that, thank you for your attendance today. Any additional questions or comments from the commissioners or staff before we adjourn? I'll just note with to everyone in the room that Clatso County Public Health really needs volunteers for the vaccine clinics. I've been volunteering. It's very rewarding and important work, and everyone is so happy to be there. So I encourage you and your friends and family to consider doing that if you feel like it's safe. So you can contact the volunteer coordinator, Jane Durkin, I believe is her name, to get information on that, or you can contact me. Happy to talk with you about it. And hearing no other comments or questions? Last time, last night. Okay, we'll go ahead and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.